This is Jason Anderson. I am calling this town council meeting to order. Today is February 8th. It is currently 7:00 PM. Mr. Wood, would you open us up in prayer?
Lord, again, we come before you seeking wisdom and discernment. And even as our discussions go about if there's disagreements, we want unity in the fact that we are working here for you and for this town. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice per all.
For roll call purposes, all council members are in attendance. Ms. Wakefield is actually joining us remotely. Moving on in the agenda, we will move on to item five, adoption of minutes at previous meetings. Can I get a motion to adopt the minutes from special town council meeting January 4th, 2022, and regular town council meeting January 11th, 2022?
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandowski and seconded by Mr. Wood. Discussion or corrections? I did find one on page 422, or excuse me, 421, where item 10H, the voice vote said five for, four against, and two abstained. The result of the vote was actually five for, two against, and two abstained. Any other comments, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is 6A. Proclamation recognizing the week of February 19th through the 26th as National FFA Week. Whereas the FFA and agricultural education programs provide a strong foundation for the youth of America and the future of the food, fiber, and natural resources; and whereas FFA promotes a positive difference in the lives of students by developing their potential for premier leadership, personal growth, and career success among its members; and whereas agricultural education and FFA ensures a steady supply of young professionals to meet the growing needs, science, business, and technology of agriculture; and whereas the FFA motto, "Learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, living to serve," gives direction of purpose to these students who take an active role in succeeding in agricultural education; and whereas FFA promotes volunteerism, citizenship, patriotism, and cooperation, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Killenly Town Council that the week of February 19th through 26th, 2022, be recognized as FFA Week. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman, dated at Killenly, Connecticut this 8th day of February 2022.
Mr. Chairman, we have two members on our virtual, the leader of the FFA, Rebecca Pond, and one of the members of FFA that are joining us. I don't know if they want me to make a quick comment on that.
I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow the two members of the FFA to speak.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandowski, seconded by Ms. George. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome. Would you like to speak?
Sure. So my name's Rebecca Pond. I'm one of the teachers in the Ag Center and also one of the FFA advisors. Tonight, we have our chapter secretary, Georgia Berry. So I'm just going to turn it over to her as she has a few words to say to you guys. And thank you again for having us tonight.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Georgia Berry. Like Ms. Pond said, I am the chapter secretary, and I have a little speech to read for you. In just two weeks, the Killenly FFA chapter will be joining over 760,000 other FFA members in celebrating National FFA Week. FFA Week is a nationwide celebration of all that is gained by students enrolled in agricultural education courses. Our students will be participating in a variety of activities, including leadership and team-building activities. And this year, we have decided to donate to a charity by contributing to Haven, Equine Rescue, and Sanctuary, which is a nonprofit located in Plainfield. We wanted to say thank you for supporting us, and we hope you have a happy FFA Week.
Thank you very much. Moving on in the agenda, the next item up is 6B. Proclamation recognizing February 2022 as Black History Month. Whereas Black History Month is observed annually across the United States in February, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas in 1915, Dr. Carter Goodwin-Woodson, a noted historian and author, second African-American to earn a PhD from Harvard University, founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, which was later renamed the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, ASALH. And whereas Dr. Woodson initiated Black History Week on February 12th, 1926, and for many years, the second week of February, chosen to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln, has been celebrated by African-Americans in the United States. Whereas in 1976, President General Ford officially declared Black History Month as part of the nation's bicentennial. Black History Week was expanded and became established as Black History Month, and is now celebrated all across North America. And in our current year of 2022, we celebrate 150 years since the ratification of the 15th Amendment granting African-American men the right to vote. Now therefore, the Killenly Town Council does hereby proclaim the month of February 2022 as Black History Month, which is a time for honoring the significant achievements, inspirations, and contributions African-Americans have made to our town, state, and nation. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman, dated at Killenly, Connecticut this 8th day of February 2022. Moving on in the agenda, the next item up is 6C. Proclamation recognizing the month of February 2022 as Teen Dating Violence Prevention Prevention and Awareness Month in the town of Killenly. Whereas Teen Dating Violence Prevention and Awareness Month is a national effort to raise awareness about abuse in teen and 20-something relationships, and promotes programs that prevent this abuse during the month of February. And whereas teen dating violence is a widespread problem affecting youth in every community across the nation; and whereas 1 in 3 young people are affected by physical, sexual, or verbal dating violence, 1 in 10 in a serious relationship have reported being slapped, pushed, hit, threatened, or coerced by their partner. And recognizing breakups are a time of greater risk, even when a relationship was never physically abusive. And whereas young people can choose better relationships when they understand that healthy relationships are based on respect, and learn to identify early warning signs of an abusive relationship. And whereas elimination of dating violence must be achieved through cooperation of individuals, organizations, and communities, and young people across the nation have organized to put a stop to dating abuse and work alongside their adult allies to educate young people about this violence. And whereas Dating Violence Prevention and Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing dating violence, and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims. Now therefore, the Killenly Town Council does hereby proclaim the month of February 2022 as Dating Violence Prevention and Awareness Month in the town of Killenly. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman, dated at Killenly, Connecticut this 8th day of February 2022. Next item up on the agenda is 6D. Proclamation recognizing the month of February 2022 as National Library Lovers Month in the town of Killenly. Whereas libraries provide much more than a place for us to enjoy great novels or discover amazing adventures of untold history; whereas in a world undergoing constant change, libraries provide enduring connections to the past and future of our communities, nations, and civilizations. Whereas the expansion of electronic networks linking libraries and their resources makes possible easily accessible information for library users around the world. Whereas libraries provide entry to important research about health, economics, housing, the environment, and countless other areas to support better living conditions, and to help people lead longer, more productive, and fulfilling lives. Whereas libraries support a competitive workforce with basic literacy programs, computers, and other resources to help children and adults learn to find, evaluate, and use information they need for their jobs, health, education, and other needs. Whereas libraries offer preschool story hour and summer reading programs to encourage children to begin a habit of reading that will serve to their benefit, serve to benefit their personal and professional lives. Now therefore, the Killenly Town Council does hereby proclaim February 2022 as Library Lovers Month, and urges everyone to visit the library to explore the adventures and possibilities. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman, dated at Killenly, Connecticut this 8th day of February 2022. Now we'll move on to item 6E. Grown Connected Program at UConn Extension Presentation.
So we're going to have Joy join us for the presentation. And for those that are watching online, the presentation will be up on the screen. The council, you guys also have it in your packet, but she'll be providing the presentation.
Thank you.
... a few weeks ago. And so we appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you about our program. As Mary said, my name is Joy Tyler. I'm the Project Outreach Educator. And before we start talking about the actual program, I thought we would begin by talking about the market region, if we can switch to the next slide. Do I have a way of doing that, or? Okay. So based on some research, we found there are about 200,000 residents in our market region for Northeast Connecticut, which consists of 23 towns. There are 130 farm retailers in this area, and those are defined as farms that retail direct-to-consumer. So like if you're part of Cabot or something like that, you're not included in this number. And then we have 14 farmers' markets, one of which is here in Killenly. Next slide. So as we all know, if we're from this area, we really value our farms around here. They're small businesses that help to strengthen the local economy. They do business with other small businesses. They employ local residents, and all of those dollars stay in our local communities. So we're all hoping for that to endure for a long time. In our next slide, now we're going to talk a little bit about what exactly is our program. It's an initiative to build relationships and connections between farmers and local residents. And through our work, we try to shine a spotlight on what's available locally, and to help facilitate developing those relationships where you're motivated to buy from the local supplier. And we create tools to help that happen. I'll talk a little bit later about some of the tools that we have. And then, you know, ultimately, we want to help local residents be able to find and enjoy the diversity of locally grown foods. Next slide. So after doing some market research with both an advisory group that's composed of local farmers who sell direct-to-consumer and a local marketing firm, they found three major themes that resonate with consumers on this topic. They are flavor, freshness, and relationships. So we focused our efforts on those three areas. Next slide. So for the flavor, I think we've all had a local strawberry or a local tomato versus what you might buy at the major grocery store, and we can taste a significant difference there. Similarly, with pasture-raised meat and poultry, it just has a superior flavor to that which might be mass-produced and available at the grocery store. And by eating with the seasons, you can inherently introduce greater variety into your own diet versus going to the major grocery store and having iceberg lettuce every week. You might have arugula, and then you might have kale. So you increase your own diversity in terms of your diet by eating with the seasons and purchasing locally. Next slide. Oh, sorry. Thank you. So obviously, it takes less time to get to market when you're buying something that's grown locally. And so because it hasn't spent all that time in transport, it lasts longer. It tends to have a higher nutritional value, and the products tend to be of a higher quality, which helps us all eat in a healthier way. Next, please. Gosh, these are changing fast. The time we spend visiting farms is what helps to connect us with our local farmers. Those relationships are built on trust and by the shared experiences and shared knowledge that you might exchange when you're interacting. And that tends to help strengthen this relationship so that people feel invested in and motivated to purchase from their local farms. So where can you get these great, wonderful, flavorful, fresh products? Primarily through CSAs, which I did note that Killenly doesn't have any, but a lot of your surrounding towns do. You have farm stands at four of the five farms in town, and farmers' market here in Killenly as well. And then local businesses that might sell, such as Ace Hardware's, you know, local hardware stores and consignment shops, things like that. I notice sell a lot of maple products and honey and things of that nature. The restaurants, there's one in Putnam, Elizabeth's Farmhouse, which is a farm-to-table, and also one in Willamette. And they purchase from local farmers and then sell their products through the menus that they feature. Next, please. This really features just a variety of local products. I think it's important to recognize there is a really wide variety of things that we can acquire locally. I know when the pandemic started, I myself wondered where can I get more things locally, because this was even before supply chain issues. But I think, you know, we all felt comfortable reaching out locally. So this just tries to really feature the wide variety of things that we can acquire that are produced locally. Next, please. And here in Killenly, I did mention that there are five farms featured: Black Sun Farm, Blueberry Hill Organic Farm, Defazio Orchard and Greenhouses, Palazzi Orchard and Farm, and Stockwell Farm. And I apologize if I mispronounced any of those. And the items that they sell, it's basically fruit, eggs, herbs, vegetables, poultry, pork, a pretty wide variety. And then again, the neighboring towns do have some CSAs, although Killenly did not feature one. I was going to mention that there's a map on page three of the guide that I handed out that has the region, and then a key with all of the various farm types that are available in each of the towns and the areas. And then the Killenly farms are listed on page 12. And toward the back of the guide, on I think page 31, I have a schedule of all the farmers' markets in the area based on what day, what their hours are, what their season is, and where you can find them. Next, please. And this is just that without the key. And I was going to mention the tools. The guide is one of the tools that we've developed. We have a website, grownconnected.org, where you can look up and find your closest CSA. You can find farms featured there, and events that are upcoming. So grownconnected.org is the website. We have a bunch of swag that we've purchased that we hand out when we go to public events. We try to talk to people about this message. We hand out the guides so that they can find things locally. And then we've developed swag like cutting boards and peelers and things to just serve as reminders and to entice people. Next, please. This is our team. Jif Martin is the project director. She is the coordinator of the Tolland Extension Office, co-coordinator, and she applied for and was awarded the grant. Becca Toms is our coordinator for communications, and she knows all these farmers. She's reached out to tons and tons of people to put the guide together. And she does all our social media and things like that. And then Alyssa does a little bit of work as a grad student, and Zainab, who came to the other Killenly meeting and presented, and myself do the outreach. Next. This is the list of folks on the advisory council, and then our partners. As I mentioned, there was a grant from the USDA, which was involved also, a match locally. The Connecticut Department of Ag, Grown Connected, and UConn Extension, and the last Green Valley are the partners on the project. Next, please. So thank you again for letting me to speak to you for a moment about this. And if you have any questions, my email is listed on the last slide here. Feel free to reach out if something occurs to you later, if you're wondering about when we're going to be at a local event. We're always looking for local events. So if you have things coming up, we would have loved to be, I believe Killenly has a tomato festival in the fall that we had wanted to come to, but did not work out. So maybe next year. Any questions?
I do have one question. Do you have a website where the information that's in this pamphlet is available?
Yes. On the grownconnected.org, there's a link to this guide. I don't think when I reached out to Killenly, I asked, but I have been asking towns if they would be willing to put a link to the guide on the town website. That would be fantastic. So I'll just send you the link.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay. Moving on in the agenda, next item up is seven, unfinished business for town meeting action, and we have none. So we'll move on to item eight, citizen statement and petition pursuant to the town council's rules of procedure. Article 4, Section 2, all presentations by citizens shall be limited to an aggregate of 45 minutes, and each citizen's presentation shall not exceed five minutes unless otherwise indicated by a majority vote of the town council. Public comment can be emailed to publiccomment@killenlyct.gov or mailed to Town of Killenly 172 Main Street, Killenly, Connecticut, 06239. Honored before the meeting. All written public comment must be received prior to 2:00 PM the day of the meeting. Written public comment will be posted on town's website, www.killenlyct.gov. Ms. Chloery, did we have any submitted comment?
We do have submitted comments, and I will let the council members know your comments were placed at your spaces earlier today, and they have not yet been uploaded to the website. They will be uploaded in the morning. I wasn't able to get to getting them off soon enough to get them uploaded prior to the meeting. So the first one is submitted by Terry Barton of 655 Chestnut Hill Road, and she submitted a comment in support of appointing Lori Zornato to the Board of Recreation and Michael Huco to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The next one is Adam Reynolds of 5 Le Fantasy Road in Danielson, writing in, "Supporting Appointment of Mike Huco for Planning and Zoning and Lori Zornato for Parks and Recreation." Lydia Rivera Abrams submitted public comment in support of appointing Michael Huco for Planning and Zoning Commission and Lori Zornato for Parks and Recreation Committee. Lacey Lunay submitted public comment in support of Michael Huco for Planning and Zoning and Lori Zornato for Parks and Recreation. Cheryl Brier, 43, Furland Drive in Daville, submitted public comment in support of Michael Huco for Planning and Zoning. Frederick Jacoby submitted public comment in support of Michael Huco for Planning and Zoning Commission. Jennifer Horner submitted two public comments. Jennifer Horner, 5 Le Fantasy Road, submitted one public comment in support of Lori Zornato for Parks and Recreation, and her second public comment was submitted in support of Michael Huco for Planning and Zoning. And the last public comment submitted was a thank you from Michael Morell, one of the Teacher of the Year recipients, thanking the council for the acknowledgement of all of the Teachers of the Years from last meeting.
Thank you. At this time, I will open up the podium for any public comment. Anyone who would like to make public comment, please step up to the podium, state your name and address.
As the town manager mentioned, last month Jill St. Clair helped the Historical Society apply for a grant from Connecticut Humanities, which we were granted, and we should be getting a check for three quarters of that. So just to let you know what we've done, we have interviewed three companies. We have a proposal from one. We're waiting for the other two to come in. And then we will check somebody to help us with hardware, because none of us there know what we need. So that is what we'll be doing. All three of them recommended that we have to definitely increase the speed that we were getting now. So I had to check with the town manager's office, because we would be having to have new cables brought in. The town engineer did get back to me and said, as long as we weren't doing the wiring, he had no problem with that. And then we also got a big surprise. In Brooklyn, there is a family trust, and about a week after, we got a phone call, and I'm the archivist, so she goes, "Who takes your donations?" So I'm thinking, okay, you know, I'm getting an item. Instead, they are matching dollar-for-dollar the grant that we got. And as long as we use it for educational purposes, it's fine. And all they ask for is just paperwork to show that we were a 501(c)(3) and a note at the end of the year as to what we were going to do. And part of what we wanted to do was to get like an iPad or a tablet, start videoing what we have in our museum, giving explanations, because we do genealogy also. So if we can attach a person from Killenly or from the surrounding area, upload it to YouTube. We also found out that there's a newsreel northeast or something like that. So I will keep you updated as to what's going on.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Nancy Grandowski, 877 Upper Maple Street. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of Lori Zornato and Michael Huco being appointed as alternate members to the Planning and Zoning Board and the Recreation Board. Lori Zornato is a master's-level social worker and therapist. She's a helping professional. She'll be a great addition to the Rec Board. She already has a lot of experience with the Little Theater on Broad Street. She's smart. She's creative and fun. She put together this really lovely Facebook page for people to enjoy called The Scattered Garden. I visited a lot. It's very uplifting. It's all about local plants that are grown in this area, and I'm a member of it and other people are. And it's just a lot of fun to be on this Facebook page. She's also an athlete. She's swam and run and biked in marathons. She'll bring a lot of positive energy to the board. And Michael is a lifelong resident of Killenly. He has 43 years of service at EB, retiring as a supervisor of planning, almost 40 years of service to the Daville Fire Company as president of the fire district and as chief of the Daville Fire Company. Over the years, Mike has been busy looking out for Killenly. He will continue with his steadfast service on the Planning and Zoning Board. Both of these candidates are already citizen rock stars in Killenly. They've worked hard to make this community a better place. I hope they're appointed to their boards. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is council and staff comments. I would definitely agree about putting a link on the town's website. I think that would be a great.
Yeah, once I have the link, I'll make sure we put it up. And we'll put it up in the Ag Commission and like in the find-it-fast areas.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Came in the last agricultural meeting, the same group?
Maybe on the Ag Commission portion of the website, but I haven't been on there to say that it is. So I'll have to look at that.
Thank you. Any further comments? Ms. Wakefield, do you have any comments?
No, I'm okay right now.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on in the agenda, we'll move on to item 10A. Daniel Toth is seeking reappointment to the Permanent Building Commission as a regular member. Mr. Toth has been a member of the Permanent Building Commission as a regular member since October of 2017. His attendance has been stable over the course of his appointment. The Permanent Building Commission is a commission of five regular members and two alternate members currently. There are five active regular members, including Mr. Toth, and one active alternate member. There is one alternate member seat vacancy. Can I get a motion to reappoint Mr. Toth?
I'll make that motion to reappoint Mr. Toth.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Kattula, I believe it was seconded by Mr. Wood. I will open up for discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, we'll move on to item 10B. Michael Huco is seeking appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission as an alternate member. There are currently three alternate member vacancies with a term of three years in which two vacancies would run from January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2023. And one would run from January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2025. Mr. Huco was interested in being appointed for an alternate member to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Can I get a motion to appoint Mr. Huco to the Planning and Zoning Commission as an alternate member? And looking at the openings, we that would run from January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2023.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Ms. George. Discussion, comments. Mr. Wood.
Again, I think, you know, I mentioned this last week, Mr. Huco has had exemplary service as a fire chief here in town. And I personally got to meet him when I first started out on EMS. And I always thought he did a phenomenal job running scenes. I think he'd do a great job and with his experience, I think he'd do a great job here.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item up on the agenda is item 10C. Lori Zornato is seeking appointment to the Board of Rec as an alternate member. There are currently two alternate member vacancies in which one term would run from March 1st of 2022 through February 29th of 2024. Can I get a motion to appoint Lori Zornato to the Board of Rec as an alternate member?
I'll make that motion.
Addie George, I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandelsky, seconded by Ms. George. I will open up for discussion. Mr. Grandelsky.
Well, when her kids were part of the system, I mean, they had an active role in the theater. That's really the point of the place where she's looking at going over to the new facility. It's going to be a whole different venue, a larger, a larger venue. It's kind of quaint over here on Broad Street. And it's going to be a whole different atmosphere.
Thank you. Ms. George.
I had some reservations due to some information that came my way. I don't know if anybody else got it. But I had a conversation with Mrs. Zornato today. I think it was a very honest conversation. I think her intentions to serve the community are very good. And I think she'll do a good job. I really do.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay? Abstentions?
Abstain.
So that is five, four, three against, one abstention. Motion carries. Next item up on the agenda is item 10B. Brian Tavila Jr. is seeking appointment to the Housing Authority as a regular member. There is currently one regular vacancy with a term of five years in which it would run from January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2025. Can I get a motion to appoint Mr. Tavila?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Ms. George. Discussion. I will say, he seemed very excited to serve our community when he interviewed last week. I did reach out to him personally because on his application, one of the things he had also indicated would be his third choice to serve on was the WPCA. And I was trying to sway him to the WPCA for the fact that we are so shorthanded on the WPCA. But he really expressed an interest that he really wants to be on the Housing Authority. And I told him, I support him on, for either one. And we will just have to work harder to fill the vacant seats on the WPCA. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion, one abstention? Thank you. Motion carries, eight, four, and one abstention. Moving on in the agenda. Next item up is 11A, Board of Ed Liaison. Mr. Napparata, welcome.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming.
Oh, thanks for having me. So, just an update on our last meeting. The regular board meeting was two weeks ago, Wednesday, the 26th of January. And we had a interview and a vote on a new member that was voted in. Jen Hedison, Heditus, I'm sorry, Jen Heditus. So that was done. The other highlights for that meeting, we had a discussion on cell phone use during board meetings is frowned upon. You can't be using cell phones, texting, things like that. If you do get an emergency, you need to step out. But we just wanted to lay it out there in the open for everybody so they know that you're not supposed to be doing that. On the facilities subcommittee, the generator at the central office on Westfield Avenue, installation has been completed. So that is up and running now. We have ordered several new, quite a few new security cameras for KIS. I guess they've been down for years. And so they finally got around to with the new IT director, Christian, going through it and working out the bugs. And so those should be installed shortly, we're hoping. And they're also installing a meter from Eversource on that building to try to figure out the power surges and why these cameras are getting fried. So that is in the works right now with Eversource. There was oh, and then we had a presentation from Goodyear on a grant that they received to build some new outdoor spaces with fencing, little staging unit so they can do some plays and things outside. But it's going to be all on the side of the Goodyear building, but it's all going to be fenced in. So kids aren't going to go rolling down the hill onto the street or anything like that. So that was a real great grant that she was able to obtain. And then we're just, now we're going forward, setting up the schedule for budget talks. So we just had our first budget meeting last week, working through those numbers. And we'll be coming forward with the plan with you guys, I guess, in March. But that was the last regular meeting that we had. And we had the informational meeting last night on the healthcare, the school-based health center. So that's still in the works as well. That's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you very much. Just a couple of things. Did they consider, since the cameras have been taken out at KIS because of power surges, have they considered putting surge protectors on either the camera system or individual cameras, if that's possible? To prevent it from happening?
I believe that he said there were surge protectors on the system on a whole. I don't know how they would, if they can do it on individual. I can run that by them at the next facility meeting and let you guys know.
Okay, all right, thank you. One other comment I do have is, I had addressed the cell phone use issue during meetings. Because I had actually had a couple of residents reach out to me that they, they were concerned that certain people were being allowed to, in a sense, make additional public comments outside of public comment period. And whether that was really happening or not, there's really no way to know. But just to, for transparency, I did recommend to all my council members as well to, unless it's an emergency, refrain from cell phone usage during the meeting.
That was what we had discussed at ours, was that it basically gave someone an open seat into the, into the forum. That was then a private messaging going on, so no. So yeah, we agree with that.
Yeah. Well, we really appreciate you having here. It's been a while. Hopefully this becomes a regular thing.
We're going to make it a regular thing. I think Norm and I are going to try and switch off so we're not both, and then we'll always have someone that we can step in.
Any other questions, comments from council? Mr. Wood.
Just on the whole cell phone use thing, as I'm sitting here thinking about that, you know, my phone is sitting here on silent. But my watch, I have, you know, you would think as a 32-year-old, I'd know how to use technology. I have no clue how to silence my watch. If I need to figure that out, I'm going to call the seven-year-old that's my tech support, who happens to be my niece. She probably could figure that out better. But that's another thing to consider, both for you, Mr. Chairman, and for the Board of Ed as well, is that watches can also, smartwatches obviously can give us the text messages that, again, obviously, emergency uses is of course needed, but
I think it was kind of a blanket statement.
About electronics itself, yeah. I know we talk cellphone, that's why I bring up the whole smartwatch, because my watch is still annoying me as I'm sitting here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and we look forward to seeing you again. Moving on in the agenda, next item up is 11B, Borough Council Liaison.
So, good evening again. At the last meeting, we reviewed the application for the American Rescue Plan Act. And there was one change we made. We had not put the borough seal at the top of the application, so we were reviewing it. So it was like, okay, so we accepted it with the one change. So now for the borough, it will have our seal on it. And we reviewed the Internet and Electronic Mail policy that was presented by the IT Technology Policies and Procedures Subcommittee. It's basically what the town is using, and that also passed. All of our meeting packets will now be sent to our new emails, except for one member who is in his mid-70s and has no computer. And so his, will have, still have to be mailed to his house. We received a proposal for web design, and we are reviewing it at home, and we will go over that at our next meeting. And a presentation was made by the Wyndham Talon 4-H Camp for the American Rescue Plan Act funds. They're, I believe, have visited just about every town looking for some funds since they have children come in from all the surrounding towns.
All right. Any questions, comments from council? Seeing none, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Moving on in the agenda, the next item up is 12A, Discussion and Acceptance of Monthly Budget Reports. Can I get a motion to adopt the summary report on general fund appropriations for town government?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Kattula, seconded by Mr. Grandelsky. Discussion. Questions, comments, Ms. Wakefield?
Good.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to the next item on the agenda, 12B, System Object Based on Adjusted Budget for the Board of Education. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
Motion has been made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Kattula. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on in the agenda to 13A, Correspondence Communications Reports. The town manager's report, Ms. Clorio, if you could go over this.
Sure. So I, you know, gave you the update on the case counts. You can see that as of February 2nd, hospitalization counts within Wyndham County have dropped pretty significantly from where we were a month ago. As we anticipated that this would decline after the, after the holidays. So we are seeing that trend downward. Unfortunately, over the month of January, we did see our death count rise by four. So we did see more of an impact there. I did give you an updated graph of the day-to-day. And you're going to see like a very large spike. That was the highest spike we've seen of daily, and that was really a weekend. So that 170 count was over a weekend, but still, that's the highest spike we have seen in daily case counts since the, even, you know, prior to, even at the very beginning of the pandemic. We've not seen it spike that high. So it very quickly started dropping back down on a daily basis. So we're now significantly lower than that spike. But at the time that I was writing this, at the end of January, we were averaging about almost 27 cases per day annually. Which is a reduction, and we are still, you know, in the couple of days since then, I'm seeing more of those reductions. So the cases continue to decline. I did give you the month-over-month comparison of vaccination rates by all age groups. We do continue to see growth in vaccination. You'll note that our 65-plus got to 100%. So our 100%, our 65-plus got to 100% vaccination status, according to the state's data. I will let everyone know that, so the, with the testing sites in Killingley, we've had, for the state testing sites, we'd have a site at QVCC that's been operated by Summit Four. A lot of those operators are changing. And they were, it was, it has finally resettled back to remaining at QVCC. We're doing, it'll be on Saturdays. It's a different vendor that's going to be doing, and it will be remain as a drive-through. There was discussion about either eliminating the site completely or, or making, looking for a walk-in facility where people could actually, you know, walk in to do the testing. I advocated, and with the help of the Northeast Department of Health with NDDH, we advocated very strongly for maintaining a drive-through location. Having people that are potentially symptomatic or believe that they may be COVID-positive walking into a facility to test. It just adds for that possibility of higher transmission possibility. And also, the drive-through component here has, has run very smoothly. That site has run very smoothly. And I've gotten a lot of compliments about how smoothly it was for people to drive up. They felt comfortable being able to have the test done within their own vehicle. So it is going to remain as a drive-through location. And all of those new schedules are now uploaded to the website and to our Facebook page and I think our Instagram. So those have all been changed as well. So Putnam's location, Killingley's locations, and Plainfield's location, all three of them got new schedules because all three have new vendors. Switching gears off of COVID impact, Owen Bell Pond, so this is a project that we've been looking at internally now for a little bit of time. So the pond at Owen Bell is our irrigation pond. We utilize that to irrigate the fields. And, you know, as you can imagine, as with any pond, sediment fills up the pond at, you know, over time. And regular maintenance, ongoing long-term maintenance of the pond would be to dredge the pond to reg- the pond, to regain that lost capacity within the pond. We did feel the effects of that lost capacity in the pond two years ago when we had the drought. We were pretty, we were, we had to shut off irrigation to all the fields. The town invests a lot in those fields, in maintaining those fields, and in keeping them in good condition. So to have to shut off the irrigation system, system to it, you can lose a lot of ground and lose a lot of money by losing your field. So, to be able to look at the longevity of that pond, we've been looking at what would it look like to dredge that pond? And not just regain capacity, but expand capacity within it. So right now, the capacity of that pond is just under a million gallons. The dredging prospect that we're looking at right now would potentially bring that pond, it would, it would increase the volume of that pond to four million gallons. So it would quadruple the size of the pond without, it would increase the footprint of the pond a little bit, but it would really increase the volume. So we would go from about a five-foot depth to about a 13-foot depth. So we'd gain almost 10 feet in that, and we would peel back some of the pond edging that's more heading towards the, kind of the back parking lot and the soccer field, kind of in that direction. But not a major, huge impact to just pulling, pulling back some of that material. So, we've been, we've met with the school department and the parks department, because obviously those, all of those fields over there are used, heavily used. Our, our schools, our high school utilizes the baseball field, a lot of our leagues use all the other fields. So we're trying to stage this in where we have the, minimize any impact that we have to those sports. So, one of the methods of dredging is to literally, it's mechanical dredging, you literally scoop the muck out of the pond and stick it on the side of the pond, and it de-waters from there, and then you scoop it all up and haul it away. That would mean removing that volume out of that pond of material, you would essentially cover the entire baseball field with the material, right? And that would take that baseball field out of commission for two years, right? So we're trying to find, what are the alternatives? So, we are looking at a, at a dredging option that would essentially, we would do the mechanical dredging, but we would put it into trucks and truck it further away in, within the park itself, and dump it in one of the back, in the backwoods area. So, it's still under review. None of this is hard and fast yet. We have to still look through permitting, we still have to, there's a number of steps we have to get through with this. We still have to get cost estimates, so we can determine funding for this. So there's a number of factors, but I wanted to kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at for this dredging project. I did include the conceptual drawing that we have of, we have the actual, and then we have the conceptual. So it's really just, you know, line drawings, right? Of what the current existing pond is, and then you can see the dashed lines are the existing pond, and then what the new pond outline would look like, right? So there's a lot of logistics to still work out. This isn't a project that we're necessarily looking to try and kick off and do this summer, because we do have a lot of permitting that has to happen, and a lot of things that we have to go through. But, you know, one of the things that we have to be cognizant of and, and, and manage is also, you know, clearly, there are fish in that pond. Most of the fish that's in that pond, all the fish that's in the pond, we put in the pond for the health and the well-being of the pond. They're not natural or native to that pond necessarily. But still, you know, when you're doing this type of activity to a pond, most, most plant, most fish will not survive that level of disturbance within the waterway. So, we have to step through that with Army Corps, Army Corps Engineering and/or deep to determine, you know, what are our steps around these things. So, just trying to give you an idea, I know we've been in this, in the conversation, there was a potential donor for, and still is a potential donor for re-doing the infield of the baseball field at the park. So we're trying to stage that project just after we do this dredging, so that way, if for whatever reason, something occurs and more, and damage is done to the baseball field will not impacting something that was just recently redone, right? So we're trying to work in conjunction with them, and they've been very amenable to working with us. So, we're kind of stepping through that. I wanted to let you know about the concession stand at Owen Bell, so we have, I'm sure you guys probably may have seen also the article in the Norwich Bulletin. So Ra-Ra's Ice Cream has permitted, we have an operations permit for our concession stands, so they are permitted for the season to operate. So they'll be looking to open at the beginning of April, so we're excited to have them on board, and it'll, you know, it's gonna be a really great addition to the park for, you know, lots of things. They, they obviously have a lot of name recognition with Ra-Ra's, but it'll be great to have an amenity like that at the, at the park. It's been a long time since we've really had a strong amenity like that at the park. So, it'll be a great addition to all of the, to the whole season, so we're excited about that. And just so everyone is aware, the permit fees for that, as we receive like any permit fees for our rentals of our pavilions or anything like that, that goes in the outdoor trust. And that outdoor trust is to be used for, for capital repairs to parks and open spaces. So that's where that funding goes to. I included the draft budget, the draft meeting schedule for the, for the key meeting dates for all of the budget meetings that we're gonna be holding, and that will be set as permanent once you act tonight on your, on your agenda item. The blizzard, we got over two feet of snow. I really wanna do a shout-out to our highway department. They worked long and hard hours through the blizzard. They came in at 2:00 in the morning on Saturday morning, and they didn't leave here until Sunday morning at, like, 5:00 in the morning. So, they worked long and hard hours to keep our roads open throughout the entire storm event, and to be, make sure that they were available should emergency services need assistance and being able to access anybody. Thankfully, I don't think that we had an emergency situation that occurred that they did, did need to do that. But their work didn't end when the snow stopped flying. So Sunday, we had them go home and rest on Sunday. I didn't have them immediately start doing cleanup efforts, because they, in order for them to start cleanup efforts, they need to tackle First Main Street in order to open up our town parking lot, our town building parking lots, as well as our Main Street, so people can park and get to businesses. There's nowhere on Main Street for that amount of snow to go. So, in order for them to start that, they have to come in to do Main Street at midnight. So they came in on Monday morning, midnight Monday morning, to begin Main Street. And so I gave you a picture of one of four piles. There was four of these piles along Main Street that they had to move. That's a lot of snow. So they worked on that from midnight. They didn't start moving into the town hall parking lot. They got, they started here at about 6:30 in the morning. So it took them from midnight until almost 6:30 in the morning to get all of that snow out. And that wasn't even necessarily getting all of the side roads. They came back the following morning at like 3:00 o'clock in the morning to clear out like the smaller ones, like Center Street and stuff like that. So, they really, it really took them three solid days of, you know, long shifts in order for them to get a lot of this cleared and to deal with, you know, we were getting a lot of calls about, you know, people concerned about sightline issues at intersections and stuff like that, and, and cul-de-sacs and all of that. So they really worked hard to try and get to all of those in priority order, right? Those higher demand traffic intersections clearly needed to be addressed before we got to some of those lower impact, lower utilized ones. But they worked hard, they did a great job, and then after we got all of this, they got all of this done, they then started clearing, you know, they started clearing sidewalks that hadn't been cleared yet. So property owners, even in big, heavy storms like this, are still required to clear their sidewalks. And we understand that not every property owner has the physical capabilities of managing that level of snow. But they essentially started, our parks guys essentially started riding our whacker snowblower from Danielson to Dayville for a couple of days, trying to clear sidewalks. So we didn't have pedestrians walking in Route 12 and walking in, you know, some of these major roadways. So, they worked very hard on getting this clean, and they did a great job in preparation, knowing that rain was coming very shortly, and we didn't want to, we didn't want to end up in a flooding situation. So, a huge shout-out to our crews for that. I did provide you separately, because I didn't want to get it lost in my manager's report, this report from 1,000 Friends of Connecticut. It was, it's the Property Tax Working Group, so this is a group that has been working, evaluating property tax reform or, in, in Connecticut. So, you know, it's been discussed for many, many years about how regressive property tax is, yet municipalities don't have any other alternative property taxes because of the state legislation as well. So, is there, is there a way to better, is there, is there a better way of doing this? Is there another avenue besides just dumping more services from the state onto the towns for it to get picked up in mill rates and pushed into a property tax, right? So, this was just recently released, so I wanted to give it to you for the information. I've gotten through portions of it. I, I will let you know, I have not read the entire thing as of yet. I am gonna be going to a meeting next week where that's gonna be the topic of conversation with a lot of other municipalities, so I'm looking to get more feedback from those municipalities as well. My understanding is this is not necessarily intended to be a presentation of everything needs to be enacted in order for it to work, but more of a menu of options. That being said, sometimes legislation likes to cherry pick certain options, but then leave off the countering, you know, the counterbalance side of what actually provides relief to the municipalities, like better balancing or better, fully funding our pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes for state properties, or fully funding our ECS calculation and payments, right? Those are things that sometimes get left by the wayside. So, I wanted to give you that report. That is gonna be a con, this is gonna definitely be a conversation driver within the legislative session. The last few legislative sessions, there has been a lot of conversation about eliminating motor vehicle tax. That would be incredibly impactful to the municipalities, that's a large revenue stream for the municipalities. And without having an alternative revenue source, all you're doing is pushing that onto real estate taxes. And so, how, you know, how do you do this, right? And, you know, one of the revenue streams that they had eliminated from the towns a long time ago on personal property was manufacturing machinery and equipment, and they were reimbursing the towns for that, and they've stopped reimbursing the towns for that. We don't get the, so, you know, how do we get some assurances that we're gonna have some stability in being able to predict our revenue, and also make sure that we're not overtly impacting one demographic within our community? So, that's definitely information to review and see how our legislation, our, you know, our legislative delegates absorb this information and what their impact, what their view is on it. So, I wanted to provide that to you as well. One of the last things I wanted to give you was law enforcement statistics, so I've been trying to give this to you on a quarterly basis, so that way you can see where our statistics are, and I, I kind of gave you all of last fiscal year and the first two quarters of this fiscal year, so you're seeing that our law enforcement division, our constables and residency troopers, that's the blue line. We are continuing to take more calls of Killingley calls. So, call volume for Killingley, it goes to our officers first before it goes to a Troop D officer, provided it's not of a certain classification. Certain classifications are required to go to Troop D for major crimes. Ours, we take them. And you can see that we are taking more and more of those calls, which is great. Also, I wanted to give you a breakdown of overtime, and what I gave to you is the historical view of what the town has paid year-over-year for just the state overtime. So we get billed for any overtime resources that we use of Troop D. They send us a quarterly overtime bill. So this is not what we've had for our own law enforcement. Our own officers are a separate overtime that we pay, and I didn't, I didn't get a chance to pull that together and give it to you, but I just wanted to show you that as our officer volume has increased, because we're now covering all of the events, we're now covering the high, you know, the, the high school games, you know, our officers are trying to cover that additional overage that needs to happen on shifts, and we have the backfill for that, you're seeing that our overtime that we're paying the state, which mind you, we pay the premium rate for the state, plus we have to pay their fringe benefit percentage is 88%. That's a high fringe benefit rate. We have to pay that for all their overtime hours. We're able to take a lot of that off of the plate, so our officers are really saving us a fair amount of money on, on those overtime costs year-over-year. So granted, 2021, we didn't have some of the events that took place, that we would normally have taken place, but even still, you know, you can see that we're still having a pretty significant impact. Planning and zoning, I just wanted to give the council an FYI. I think at the last planning and zoning meeting, there was discuss, in, in the discussion about when the next meeting was, I think the date, February 15th, was said, because if you look at the calendar, that's the, like, that seems to be the right date. It was a miscalculation. It has to be, it's the third Monday, and they were, they were, they were on the wrong, they were on the wrong week. So the correct date is February 22nd. It has been published in the paper, it's up on our website, but I wanted to give you all the heads-up that that did change, that they did put out a correction on that. So, that was just an inadvertent error on that. So, I'm just trying to get that word out. I think that's, that's everything. That's enough. Sorry.
I do have a couple comments, questions. As far as the, that weekend, we had the huge spike in the COVID case rate. Now that doesn't include at-home tests.
Correct, no, this is just...
Those are not reported.
Yeah, this is just tests that were done at doctors' offices or at the testing locations. So, you know, if somebody took an at-home test, nobody would ever know that it was positive. Correct.
So realistically, that number is probably substantially higher.
Especially since we've just distributed so many at-home tests.
Yeah. Other question I had was in regards to the state police overtime paid. Those amounts in those fiscal years that you have listed, did that include the fringe benefit payments?
Yes.
Is that additional?
No, that includes the fringe.
Okay.
That, that was all, the total payment.
Total cost, okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Any, Mr. Grandowski?
On Owen Bell Pond, how much are we gonna have to close, close down the park? Because I mean, all the construction department, the dredging, I mean, we're gonna have to fence this area off.
Right, and so that was in the logistics that we're still trying to work through, because we have to work through, like, the path, you know, exactly where are we gonna be able to bring the material, and exactly how we're gonna get it there. So, yes, we would have to close off sections of the park in order for us to be able to achieve this. You know, it may mean that we have to close off at points at times, we may have to close off the walking track, complete, that whole area completely. The dredging component, we, we anticipate would likely take about two months to complete the actual dredging component. So it means that we would take it out offline for probably like the middle of a July through about the middle of September, in order to be able to complete that project. You know, anytime you take a park like that offline, or pieces of a park like that offline, it's painful.
Yes.
It's painful, it's difficult for everyone. We're trying to work logistically around all of the different teams that utilize this as their primary location and making sure they have alternate location. But ultimately, in the long term, it's the best investment that the town can do.
We want to get this done, that's, that's the key.
Yeah.
So it's better to bite the bullet.
Right. So we want to make sure that we have a well-developed plan, and that we can communicate it out to the public well in advance, as to what they can expect, and what they're gonna see, and what's gonna be available, and what's gonna get closed off. But I wanted to give all of you the information about the project and the, because it is a fairly in-depth and complex project. That is gonna be a very public project, because it's in the middle of the most-used park in the northeast corner.
Yes.
I wanted to give you the heads-up on kind of what we're looking at and the direction and path that we're looking to go down. And, you know, again, there's still a lot of question marks on this, we still haven't identified funding on it yet, we're still working on cost estimates, and we're still looking on logistics. Is it logistically feasible for us to do what we're looking to do as far as trucking the material further down? The benefit of doing that is if we're able to truck it further into the site and deposit it down into an area, there's like a, a gully in the woods, if we're able to deposit it there, then we actually retain the material. So we'll be able to use the material subsequently in other projects.
Right, right.
Right? So, that can be a big benefit to the town. I mean, we have a very, we have a, we have a great... So that can be a big benefit to the town. I mean, we have a very, um, we have a, we have a great parks department that utilizes every ounce of, of, uh, material that they possibly can get in order to be able to keep our parks in such good shape. So, I mean, that could be a great material.
And that's all organic material. That's what, that's.
And it would be a sand, a sand and gravelly mix as well of what we're also pulling out to expand the capacity of the pond, too. So it's a great mix. Um, so we'd be able to retain that. And we also wouldn't have to pay the fees for trucking it off, you know, further disposing of it. But, um, but we have to still round out a lot of that information.
But it's nice to get this out in the public that there's going to be a disruption over there. Please bear with us. You may lose the season, you know, inconvenience, but in the long run, it's going to be so much better than the rest of the fields. We have the irrigation water. If we don't have that, then you lose everything or a bigger portion of it, so.
Right, right. And we've been fortunate that with, you know, having that irrigation pond, many areas around us that are, um, irrigating their fields are irrigating it with, um, public water supply off of like Connecticut water, and they're paying for that water, um, in order to irrigate their fields. Killingley doesn't have to do that because we use the irrigation pond for that. And we, because we're using it as an irrigation pond, when it leaches back, it's leaching back into the pond, right? So we're able to kind of self-restore our, um, our recharge our system. Um, and our splash pad is, um, is, is connected to a well. So we're not paying for water fees for that as well. But the well would not be able to sustain the irrigation. It doesn't have sufficient water supply for irrigating all of the fields as well.
Mr. Wadehead.
Is that naturally, uh, what's the, what's the recovery rate?
So it's really a, um, uh, it's really a, um, it's not really, it's not spring. Well, there, we believe that there might be a small spring feed to it, um, but it's pretty much runoff from, um, the 395 area, um, and in that direction, it's pretty much runoff. Um, so. It's not. No, we would, we've, we've tested it many, many times. It's not contaminated. There's sufficient space for anything to be able to recharge off of it or to, um, filter through it. But, um, I would have to get what an actual recharge rate would be on it. I would have to check with the engineer.
You probably could save a bunch of money if you, if you dredge half of the pond and then, and then build that up and then use that, whatever you dredge, you could dry out the other half and it'd be less, less waste water.
Maybe, yeah. So we're trying to see what alternatives. We're talking to a couple of dredging companies to see what might make the most sense to, and be the least disruptive to the park overall.
I had a question on the, um, on the overtime, the PD overtime. And you, you said you don't have all the numbers in there. Could you provide the numbers just to give us a, like, a total? What our total would be, you know, just to see what the, the actual savings are?
Yeah. So what, um, I can give you, I'll give you, yeah, no. So what I gave you was just the, what we pay for Troop D's overtime. Um, I will give you, um, the, what we've paid for, um, our departments, our staff's overtime over the last couple of years. It's been, um, I want to say it's been below $10,000 each year for the last three years. So.
I said I would show a substantial saving.
It's a substantial saving. So I will pull, I apologize. I didn't get it, I didn't think about it until I had already distributed and then I went, should have pulled that out. So I will get that for you.
One other thing to add to that. Now, looking at the amount of coverage we use from the state police for overtime, has any of that overtime been covered by our officers during their normal hours?
Yes.
Okay. So that would, the overtime number to 10,000 might be a little skewed because it wouldn't necessarily be overtime. It would just be the regular officer salary covering what we had been paying state police overtime.
Right. But that's part of the savings.
Yeah.
Is that, you know, because we now have essentially, um, two to three officers on per first and second shift, you're able to better backfill at a straight pay level as opposed to always triggering overtime, which when it's Troop D, we were always triggering an overtime because they were having, they were doing their shift and then having people, uh, backfill on an overtime shift. So that's the added savings as well. That's why we don't have as much constable overtime. Um, and I will say, our, our officers also have the ability to take, instead of getting paid their overtime, they will also take comp time. So they will not receive actual payment, which further saves the town. Um, and then they, uh, you know, they're able to take time off subsequently at a later time. That's, that's agreeable, you know, that, um, meets the scheduling needs. So.
Thank you. Um, one other quick question. The splash pad runoff from that, does that leach back into the pond? Or does that go to?
Yeah. So it actually, the, the, the drain itself goes to a, um, goes to a oil-water separator and then it discharges out to our sanitary sewer.
Okay.
We have looked at, we did, that was a project that we were looking at. Did we want to divert that to the pond as, uh, as a recharge mechanism? The splash pad brings with it its own unique challenges with, um, with, uh, water discharge. Um, there's a number of factors that you have to be cognizant of, and there's not a lot of space between the, the splash pad itself and the pond. So we would have to, there was, there's a whole bunch of additional mechanisms that are, would have to be in place in order to make sure that whatever's going down the drain in the splash pad is not contaminating the pond. So it's more some, it's more simplistic to just keep it attached to the sanitary sewer. If that makes sense.
Thank you. Mr. Wood.
So a few things here. First off, with the snow removal, I got to say, you know, much as, uh, it, it's easy to complain, I guess. Two feet of snow. Uh, that was amazing that they, they spent all this time. I was watching them. A little bit, I was working during the storm myself, and, um, I want to say a little bit more proud of our town roads there than I am of the state roads. But, you know, it is hard to keep up when that kind of snow's falling. And, you know, as you said, they were available for anything. Uh, we didn't have any calls. I think the fire department had one call. But that they were available is always amazing because I know the other day, uh, a crew got stuck and my, they contacted me and my first call was for DPW. So.
Yep. Heard about that call.
So I, uh, I have zero problems calling those guys and I know they're, they're great on coming out. With the state police too, again, that, those guys, you know, we're sa, we're saving money with, with having our own officers. And it was even nice last night. I walk into Pizza Bazaar's and those guys are there, actually. And I get to have a conversation with them, one profession to another, to discuss things. And I love the fact that they don't just talk to me, uh, because, you know, town council member, EMT, uh, they talk, I've, I've watched them talk to any average citizen. So again, those guys are doing an awesome job. And, uh, the, the way that our police, uh, is moving, our police force is moving forward, I think it's going to be a phenomenal asset to continue on having more and more officers.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Well, could you give us enough, I'm hearing things about NTE. Do you know anything that happened with that?
So I did get notice, um, for, uh, and I'm sure, I think I sent you guys the links for some of the newspaper articles. So there were some articles just recently, and I don't have any additional information outside of those articles. So, uh, they did, NTE did appeal FERC's, uh, decision to, um, the federal appeals court. Federal appeals court issued a stay on the decision that was made by FERC. So, um, it appears that NTE would have been able to participate in Monday's auction for the Ford capacity auction. ISO has, has, their statement is that they're not releasing any results from the auction until after the 30-day period. So I think it's, um, you know, we'll see what happens from here. So I, you know, I don't know what the next step is and I'm not sure. I think they have to, it sounds as though FERC has to do, there has to be an additional appeal step, um, within there. So there was a stay issued on FERC's decision.
I just want a little bit of an update. That's all.
Yeah, sure.
There was a change.
Yes, yeah.
Get it out to the public.
Yep.
Thank you. Any further comments? Ms. Wakefield, do you have anything?
Nope, almost sat.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Ms. Cororio. We'll now move on in the agenda. The next item up is actually 13B. You've already covered that during Town Manager's Report. Next item would be 14, unfinished business for Town Council action, and we have none. So we'll now move on to new business, 15A. Consideration and action on a resolution setting the dates, times, and places of the public hearing, the annual town meeting, and the adjourned annual town meeting machine vote on the 2022 to 2023 budget ordinance. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
I need that motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandowski, seconded by Mr. Wood. I will open up for discussion. I know Ms. Cororio would, uh, uh, include it in our packet, the draft dates for those.
If, if I may, I just want to bring one thing to everyone's attention, and I, I apologize for this error. On the cover sheet, just on the cover sheet, the resolution is correct. On the cover sheet, I had indicated that the proposed public hearing was going to be virtual. It is not. The proposed public, the proposed public hearing for April 14th is going to be an in-person public hearing at the, at the Killingley High School. So the resolution is correct. So I just wanted to, you know, recognize my typo. Uh, the dates that you have before you are the ones that are what I would say Killingley has historically utilized for dates. So we have historically held the public hearing on the second Thursday in April, which would be Thursday, the 14th by charter. The public hearing has to be held before April 15th, so that meets that requirement. The annual town meeting by charter is the first Monday in May, and the adjourned machine vote happens the subsequent Tuesday. So these all follow those historical patterns of dates as well as, uh, you know, the other meeting dates that I gave you in the rest of your packet.
Thank you. Um, discussion, questions, comments from council?
Well, these just look like your regular schedule from similar to last year and the year before.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on in the agenda to item 15B. Consideration and action on a resolution authorizing the town manager to execute and implement an affirmative action policy statement.
If I may ask, uh, the chairman, I don't know if you want to consider the next grouping together because these are all the annual statements that is required by our small cities and housing rehab programs. So, um, it, it's up to the council. You can decide to do them individually or do B through H as one consideration entirely your choice.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to do I and D through H as one item.
I'll second.
Save some time.
Uh, we've got a motion and a second to, um, approve items 15B through 15H under one. If anyone would like any of these removed, um, I will remove that individual one and we can do that one separately. So I will entertain a motion to approve, actually, we already have a motion in the first. I will open up for discussion, comments. Ms. Cororio, if you could just go over these really quick and explain, especially for the public, as to why, um, we have these in force.
Sure. So, um, the town, the town of Killingley has participated and continues to participate in housing rehab grants and small cities grants. Those grants afford low-income, um, individuals an opportunity to have, uh, renovations to their housing as well as housing rehab for, um, we have a more, the most recent one is a $810,000 grant for the rehabilitation of a, of our local domestic violence shelter that we're working on. This is, uh, federal money that passes through. So it's the Department of, it's the federal HUD Housing Department and, uh, passes through the state. So there's a number of federal requirements that we have to maintain. All of these statements and actions are required as part of that. That being said, there are some of these that by law, we have to do them anyway, right? So anti-discrimination, you know, there's affirmative action. Those are all ones that we're required to do anyway, um, under, uh, you know, uh, under Department of Labor laws anyway. So, um, there are standard policies that we've had in place for a long time. None of this is, uh, is new to the town of Killingley or any of our policies and practices. So while it most directly impacts and it comes to you every year because that is a requirement of the federal, um, grant process, is that the council, the legislative body of the town, reaffirms these policies on an annual basis. We've had them in place for, um, you know, decades for some of them because that's been the requirement as current. Some of them are, um, affirming that individuals will receive fair and equitable housing. So they have, um, equal access to, um, appropriate and safe housing, which, um, you know, everybody wants to make sure that people have safe housing and equal access to that. So that's really, in a broad brush, that's the grouping, and that's why we really take them up as, um, all-in-one meeting like this where you get them and they're what we consider our annual grouping of reaffirmation of these policies because it is directly related to those, uh, federal and state pass-through grants that we administer, um, in the, uh, small cities and the housing rehab programs. And I think I got it right. Mary Brom is not looking at me funny, so.
Do you know roughly, if we weren't to approve these, um, in totality, how much grant money could be, we be risking losing?
A, a fair amount. So while the current grant is $810,000, Killingley has been awarded through these grants, I'm going to go off the top of my head, well over $10 million over probably the last eight or nine years we've received in, um, grant awards under the small cities grant and under the housing rehab. So, um, it's, it's a, it's a lot of money. Um, and it, and it really goes towards the vulnerable populations of the community.
Thank you.
Are any of these new?
None.
From, these are all pretty much copy-paste?
All prior, yes. These are, none of these have changed in, I'm going to say, at least the last 10 years. Correct, yeah. At least the last 10 years, it's been the same, exact same policies, exact same requirements. No, there's been no revisions.
Thank you. Any further comments? All those in favor of approving items 15B through 15H, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on in the agenda to item 16, council member reports and comments. Ms. Wakefield, would you like to start, please?
Okay. Um, so Border Rex met and, um, they're, they're scheduled a special meeting to, to go over their budget. That's the end of February, I think, I want to say the 28th. And it's kind of earlier in the afternoon than their usual. But, you know, the new, the new members that we just appointed, um, were in attendance. And I, I got there a little late because I had to, I actually had a Girl Scout meeting, so. But it's, yeah, Border Rex doing, doing his things, um, reaffirming, yeah, what Ms. Cororio's had to say about the dredging. Anything that deals with the Army Corps of Engineers is going to take a really long time to get, get through, unfortunately, which is why we paid for our own bridges that time. But that's ancient history at this point, so. But, yeah, Border Rex has been good. Um, and I, and I will, I will definitely give kudos to our town crew for keeping us, our roads clear. They were clearer than the highway, than the state roads were. And honest with you, kudos to our, our constables because they're. they're all out there and they're doing, doing a great job, so. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Um, Ms. Barclay, would you like to go?
From the, um, January 18th, Housing Authority, um, just pretty much, uh, the, uh, contractor who was doing the roofs wanted to get out of finishing the job, but, um, they would like, um, him to finish because he already started it. So that was pretty much from the Housing Authority. Um, the planning and zoning meeting from January 18. The pub, was public hearing on Frito Lay. They're still looking, um, to increase the maximum height of the building from 50 feet to 86 feet, eight and a half inches. They've, um, made some revisions to the auto parking by adding 172 spaces. There'll be 289 feet separating, um, Upper Maple to the closest auto parking lot. 15 trailer spaces will be added and that will comply with 25-foot buffer. They've also, um, made some landscaping plans to the trailer lot with white spruces and red cedars and to the auto lot, landscaping with white cedars or spruces and red cedars. The attorney, Mary Miller, from the Lake Association, um, joined virtually. The Lake Association still has concerns with noise mitigation and, um, the Lake Association's attorney worked with Joseph Hammer from, uh, Frito Lay and they needed to submit conditions on February 1st. So the public hearing, um, is closed and they will, uh, have 65 days to act, except at, um, there's two things that are gonna be open. And that'll be the conditions of the noise mitigation and where all the cut and fill from the con- um, construction will go. Uh, American Storage Centers LLC, they purchased the old, um, Byright Building and, um, they would like to, um, build storage. They will keep their original building for climate-controlled storage and then they would add, um, storage as needed. So that public hearing was closed and they will, um, act on it on February 22nd. And the zone map change on Route 6, that meeting will, is postponed until March because the Frito Lay meeting went until almost 10:30. That was a long meeting. And that is it.
Uh, thank you. Um, the Housing Authority meeting, um, my understanding was that they had passed a mask mandate for any employees of the Housing Authority and?
It, um, they are complying currently with the state mask mandate. They passed a vaccine mandate.
Okay, that's what it was, sorry.
But they, the Housing Authority is considered a long-term care facility, even though it's not.
It, it's only, so that is for, for at least that going to cover the housing section of it and, um, all of the staff, their staff, I won't ever want us to, let me, have the staff.
Okay.
For that, uh, of the, of the housing.
Okay.
And their vendors that were, uh, their vendor, their vendor, um, had, all of them, that, they, the vendor themselves had a vaccine. But the housing, so the state was pressing the Housing Authority to put this in place because the governor had accorded that in, in the long-term care facility category.
Okay.
For care of, of vulnerable population.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Because I did receive, uh, a comment from citizens over, think they, they thought it was the town that was implementing this, this vaccine mandate. Um, I just wanna clarify to the public that this is not the town, um, that implemented this. Thank you. Uh, Ms. George.
I do not have a report. You covered for me the third bed because we had the family illness.
Jason, I had a, I had a question for the Housing Authority. Were the workers, um, I don't know if you would know this, were the workers given an opportunity for religious exemption?
Um, they said that they would accept religious and medical exemptions.
That's good. Considering the Civil Rights Act of 1964.
Yeah, that was in the policy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, as Ms. George said, I did attend the Board of Ed meeting. Um, everything that went on was actually covered during our Board of Ed liaison, um, presentation. Um, I did also, I attended the personnel subcommittee meeting earlier this evening. Um, we discussed during executive session, uh, a couple collective bargaining agreements, which I cannot speak to because it was executive session. And I also attended Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission last night. Um, there were, uh, two different applications that were unfinished business that both were passed. Um, one was for construction of a single-family residence and garage, um, on Fallbrook Road. And the other one was for, uh, redeveloping existing agricultural property for residential use. And that one was on Pineville Road. Um, new business that they had, um, was, uh, someone was looking to, uh, do a selective timber harvest. Um, and they did have one question is, that was brought up as far as when they were gonna be crossing, um, a stream. So they were looking for clarification on that from the forester. And that's all I had. Mr. Kudula?
Um, I attended the fiscal sub with yourself and Mr. Wood and Ula. Um, and we reviewed those DAPR funds and we had that presentation from Mrs. Stockwell about the library fines and fees. Um, solid waste, we met. That was my first meeting going to that with, uh, Mr. Whitehead and we, um, just had a discussion to get up the speed on the fees and the contract with Casella and whatnot. And, uh, Permanent Building Commission met last week, I believe it was, last Wednesday, and they put an RFP out for a, uh, commissioning agent for the KMS school project. And I would like to thank also the highway crew and the, I know the Parks and Rec do a lot of the stuff, helping them with the small cleanups and whatnot, but they did, uh, they did a great job. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't wanna forget the parks crew. They keep lots, you know, our parks open, our sidewalks open. They do an amazing job through this as well.
Thank you. Mr. Wood?
So I attended the historic district, district commission meeting. Um, they went over their brochure, uh, that they've been working on for a while now. Explains really a lot of the work that they do. Um, in fact, uh, they found some errors and, uh, this evening I actually got through getting in my email, uh, the, the, uh, proof from awards and printing. Uh, it's looking great. I think it'll be a great thing to help educate the public. Um, I attended fiscal sub as, uh, a few of us also did. Uh, so that's already been, uh, discussed and as well Personnel Subcommittee and it was you and I. So you've already discussed that too, so. Make this short.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Murphy?
I attended, uh, agriculture and actually this growing connective came and did a little thing at the meeting. They elected their officers and, uh, they talked about their classes, which I've talked about before. They're on their website. They should be on their website. Um, I actually missed the MWPCA or, you know, whatever the initials are, um, because they canceled and I thought it was really canceled. It was rescheduled to the next week. So, you know, Ed's like, did you go? I'm like, no. But, uh, they were here and, uh, I don't really think there was anything new that we heard, uh, here. You know, we heard it last week. But Ed, Ed can address it if he's got something he wants to say. Yeah.
Mr. Whitehead?
Again, I'd like to, uh, thank the town, get town workers in the, in the Parks and Rec. They did a phenomenal job. And I can definitely attest that they were running all night long that snow because it was going right behind the house, so. They did a, they did a fantastic job and Kevin, Kevin covered the, uh, the waste committee, so. That's all I have. Great job.
Thank you. Mr. Grandelsky?
Yeah, I wanna concur with that with the highway and the wreck department. You know, when you get two feet of snow, there's no place to go and it would just, you know, you, you, you work whatever you have to do to make it happen and they did a really good job. Um, on the Conservation Commission, they were working on the environmental award and, uh, looking into the forest management plan for Chase Reservoir. That took pretty much most of the time. And on the WPCA, we had quite a discussion last week, uh, which was very informative. Um, you know, so we still have some issues that weren't covered by the upgrade of the plant, those windows and doors. And then the infiltration study that's coming up that it's already been done and just left, you know, with input. That was only a small portion of the infiltration, uh, targeted area. There's still other areas that need to be looked at. And then the Suez contract is up, is coming up. I guess there was a request for proposal and only Suez responded. And the Frito Lay contract. They have a big effect on what goes on at the sort of, they're loading. It's not just the flow, uh, so they're load. So when they shut down for a day or two, or whatever they're doing, it does affect the plant. But it's, it's nice that a Frito Lay representative is usually at the meeting and, and gives, for the most part, gives a heads up to say, hey, we're gonna be down because if, if, all of a sudden they shut down, it, it's nice that they have some notice. So it works out. But it's a good relationship now with Frito Lay.
I'm just curious with the Frito Lay expansion, um, if their shutdowns will have a more substantial impact on the sewer plant or not? And if the WPCA and Frito Lay have worked and town engineer have worked to see how much of an im- how much more of an impact it would have during uh, shutdowns after the expansion?
Well, I guess you have a little bit more with the contract that, I don't know if you've started to look at that yet or not.
So with the contract, you know, part of that will be under negotiation. With the Frito Lay expansion, we don't necessarily have all the demographics of any change in load yet. So that calculation can't be done yet. So we don't necessarily know impact on that. So that's all part of getting more vetted through the process of the Frito Lay expansion. So we really can't answer what those questions are at the moment right now. Um, but clearly we're trying to dovetail our negotiations with Frito Lay, knowing that the expansion's there as well. You don't wanna do a, a negotiation on a contract right now that's gonna completely or, or not completely or substantially change within, you know, two years out. So, um, we're trying to make sure we try and dovetail those conversations.
You know, with Frito Lay, the co- the way the contract is written, depending on the flows, depending on like this infiltration that we're getting from outside, sometimes they owe us an extra hundred thousand, then the next year the town owes them. It's a wacky contract. It, it, you know, it, you can't plan it. It's what it is. So that's another area. Hopefully we can straighten it out. It's a little more, it's not the highs and the lows.
Yeah.
More, more even expense to both sides because planning-wise, that's a, that's a tough hit. If, if we're gonna send back some money to them, it, 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 it kills the, the finance, finances of the plant.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say you have a lot of spare tanks for it next door, right? You may wanna have an equalizing basin, Mary, if that becomes an issue.
Yeah, we'll have to look and see if, we don't really have a lot of tanks next door. So we have to.
Isn't there a company that's using something next door and they're leaving? All you would need is one, uh,
Potentially, depending on, depending on if something goes into that facility that may potentially use it. So that's, yeah, but there might be opportunity. Yeah, there might be.
Thank you. Uh, anything further? All right, we'll move on in the agenda. The next item up is 17A, executive session, contract negotiations, land lease. Uh, can I get a motion to move into executive session, including the town council and the town manager?
I'll make that motion.
Oh.
I knew what you meant.
Who was the first?
I was.
So, uh, motion's been made by Mr. Kudula, seconded by Mr. Grandelsky. Um, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We are going into executive session. Um, we will actually take a-